Okay, we are ready. Welcome to the regular City Commission, regular City Commission Virtual Zoom Meeting, City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, October 21st. It is slightly after 10:00. We're getting at 10:02. And Madam Clerk, if you will please read the instructions for joining our meeting via Zoom, please.
Yes, good morning, everyone.
Madam Clerk? Oh, there you are. Okay, you're muted.
Yes, good morning. Good morning, everyone. These are the instructions to participate in the virtual commission meeting. The city commission meeting is held virtually through Zoom. The public may join the meeting via Zoom at The instructions to access the virtual commission meeting by phone, you have to first dial any of these, any number from the United States to include When you connect, a machine will ask you for the meeting ID. Then dial 3-2-5-5-2-3-6-0-5-9, followed by a pound sign. Wait a few minutes until the host accepts and gives you access to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I believe when I opened the meeting, I didn't even say this was a City of West Miami commission meeting. I think I jumped right into regular commission meeting. So this is a City of West Miami commission meeting. Madam Clerk, let's see. I have Madam Manager for the invocation, please.
Thank you.
Let's bow our heads today and thank the Lord for our daily blessings and pray for all the City of West Miami residents and business owners who are trying to cope with so much during such difficult moments in time. We pray for leadership, respect, and divine guidance so that we can all contribute to making the world a little better place to live. We pray for all our law enforcement officers and first responders who risk their lives in each passing day to protect and serve all the citizens of this community. Today especially, we say a special prayer for the Miami-Dade County Officer who was shot at yesterday while serving a warrant. We pray for a peaceful election cycle and we pray for all the candidates who are involved with the upcoming cycle. We pray for those who are ill and frail so that they can be comforted in the company of family and friends. And we ask all of this in your name, amen.
Thank you, Madam Manager. And I'm also going to ask for a moment of silence for everyone to please make their own intentions to the Lord. So a moment of silence for everyone. Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, if you would do me the honors of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir. Everyone stay up for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Yes, a roll call. Mayor Ronda Rodriguez.
Present.
Vice Mayor Eric Diaz-Padron is excused today. Commissioner Candy Dablanca. Present. Commissioner Juan Blanes. Present. And Commissioner Luciano Suarez is present. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Next item.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for October 7th, 2020, regular commission virtual meeting.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I need a second.
Second.
Thank you.
No, I can't do that.
Oh, you, you, you. That was you. Commissioner, come on. You got me, you got me. I didn't realize that was you. I need a second.
Everybody was awake.
I need a, I need a second on Commissioner Blanes's motion, please. Let me unmute. Commissioner Blanca, are you seconding that motion? Hold on, I'm trying to unmute her. Mr. Q, I can't seem to unmute Commissioner Blanca nor Commissioner Suarez.
I'm calling Mr. Q.
Hold on. I need a second on Commissioner Blanes's motion. Okay.
I am not sure if I was here this 7th.
Okay, no, no. Yes, Commissioner.
I was excused for two meetings because of the problems I have. So I don't know if I was here pressing or not.
Thank you, sir. Yes, that's, that's fine. I'm trying to unmute Commissioner Blanca, but it seems that, hold on.
If you're allowed the mayor, I can step into the conference room and try to assist.
Yes, because I'm having trouble unmuting Commissioner.
Yeah, and Mr. Quintana is trying to do that remotely. I just talked to him.
Okay. Right, so it seems that there's a problem that we cannot unmute Commissioner Blanca at the moment.
One second, Madam Mayor. Give me one second. Okay, Mr. Quintana is trying to see what the problem is with the computer because he cannot do it remotely. So please allow him one minute.
And yeah, I can't either, and I know I'm a co-host and I can't. So, oh, there he is. Okay, everything's under control. Mr. Q's in the house.
Okay.
Okay, we're good. Commissioner, we can hear you. Do you second Commissioner Blanes's motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, I have a first, I have a motion and a second.
Yes, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero item passes. Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item five, public comments.
Do we have anyone from the public who's registered to speak during the public comment section?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I would like to take this opportunity to introduce. We have, we have two very special guests. First of all, we have Jason Spiegel, who is a managing partner from Freebie, who will be presenting, he's on the agenda to present some data from Freebie. And we also have Mr. Carlos Gonzalez, who's present with us today. And Mr. Gonzalez is actually a student at FIU. He is majoring in Bachelor of Arts in Political Science. He is minoring in International Relations. He will be graduating in the fall of 2020, which is right around the corner, Mr. Gonzalez. And he's interning and doing an internship as far as being involved in politics. So he's here to join our meeting today and listen and learn. And Mr. Gonzalez, do you have anything you'd like to say to us? Unmute yourself.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor Ronda Rodriguez, and thank you to City Clerk Anani Gonzalez for the opportunity to be here. It really is great to be here. Thank you.
Yes, this request came through the Clerk's office and we're very happy to have you, Carlos. And anything you need from me, if I can assist in any way, I'd be more than happy to. You let me know, okay? And congratulations. It looks like he's got a pretty extensive law, a lot of, a lot of law, international relevant coursework, international law, statistics for business, a very impressive resume, sir. So congratulations on all your hard work. It's, it's obviously paying off for you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, next item is item six, report of the City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Commission. If I may, go through the report which I issued late last night and send it via email. The first item is the after-school care program. And I don't know if John Michael is in on the Zoom call. Mayor, I don't see him on the.
Yes, I don't, I don't see him. So please, you've got to report on that. If he comes in, I will, I will, I will have him report as well. But yeah, I don't see him now, so please report on that, Madam.
Thank you. Late last evening, before I published the report, I spoke to Megan Gonzalez at the park and basically to get an update as I was getting ready to publish my manager's report. The city has opened its after-school care program for city residents. We have taken every possible precaution to ensure to the best of our ability a safe environment for children to do homework and also get to interact socially, which is very important. And especially during this pandemic, they have been indoors for quite some time. As of yesterday evening, I learned that we had picked up 12 students at Sylvania Heights and two students at Somerset Academy that they go directly to the recreation center because they've already been enrolled by their parents. Some parents are planning to drop their children off. We have some registrations in the pipeline. So I suspect that by early next week or midweek, the registrations will start to trickle in and will probably get to 25 or 30 kids in the next, over the next few, I want to say, within, within the next week or 10 days. Let me see. Oh, it was our intention to take the kids outdoor after the homework program, but the weather is not cooperating. So for now, we have ordered some partitions to make sure that they meet the physical distancing requirements and they will, the children will be kept in their areas to accomplish their homework and have their snack. Once we're able to take them out, John is prepared to deal with outdoor activities for the kids. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have as of this date.
Any questions for the manager on our after-school program? No? Proceed, Madam Manager, with the rest of your.
Thank you. The passport office expansion, it seems like it's a forever project, but Mr. Penna has either reached out or will be reaching out to the contractor who was supposed to have completed work this weekend, sanding, painting, and the completion of the baseboards. So we have issued the purchase order for the furniture, meaning the desk and the countertops that includes the completion of the counter area for our clerks to be able to handle passports. This will also enable Mr. Quintana to install computers and the cameras so that we can take pictures and basically prepare that area for the bulk of the passport activity. We hope that we're able to complete the balance of the work probably within the next two to three weeks, depending on the contractor and the furniture. The next item on my report is the office reconfiguration. The city's accounting office has outgrown the present space and we've been working with very limited space for quite some time. As you're aware, we, we are planning to make changes to the staffing in the accounting department that will require the need to accommodate space for Eliana Adai, who is being transferred to accounting as part of the overall budget plan that was introduced and approved by the commission. Eliana and Rita will stay on full time and we need to make a provision for a desk or a working table for, for the auditors when they come in. We not only have our independent auditors that we deal with, we have our PTP auditors from the county. We have auditors from the Alliance for Aging. So we have to have the room and the provisions onsite to accommodate the auditors. And what better place than with the accounting staff? That's being, that being said, and as you know, there's an item on the agenda that if the city commission approves today, Mrs. Leon will be retained by the city under a separate agreement and will deal with that as a different agenda item. However, I still think we should have a place for her if this, if this work schedule is approved by the commission. We should have a place for her to have to come in and do work or meet with the auditors over time. So that being said, Mr. Penna and I have talked about placing the accounting office or expanding the conference room and the accounting office and uniting it by creating a small conference area, a small closet for records, and the ability to have one table at least and two working desks. So that is the way we have proposed to do it. Years ago, and it should be noted, Commissioner Blanes gave up his office to provide us the space that we needed. As well, Commissioner Candy Dablanca gave up her space when she had the small office in the lobby to provide us a larger lobby area. And the Mayor, Mayor Rodriguez has given up the front office and opened it as a mayor and city commission office. And that's the way we label it for you. So we can use that area when not in use by the members of the city commission. We could conceivably use that area, which is going to be fixed after we finish the passport, as a conference room. That leaves us with one remaining officer, office assigned to Commissioner Suarez. So before we proceed with this change, we would very much like to hear your thoughts on this issue and we welcome your comments. Mr. Penn, I don't know if you have anything to add based on our conversation on this subject.
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
I have a question, Madam Manager and Mr. Penn. So are you removing the wall, the wall that's presently between the existing conference room and the finance department? That wall's coming down, so that whole area will be the existing finance department and the conference room in the back will all be one? That wall's coming down? Is that what you're saying?
No, what we agreed to is make the existing finance office a storage room for the financial records and let them use the conference room split up in three.
So that wall between the two is staying?
Yes.
Okay, so they'll be moving into the conference room and where they are now, that space will become storage.
It will be closing that space up.
For storage, okay. And, and the existing conference room, it will be large enough to hold the?
Three desks, three desks or a working table and two desks.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. And when will we, when, what do you project that we'll be doing this project or undertaking that?
Mayor, as soon as we're done with the passport office because we have to shuffle a lot of things around to make this happen.
Okay.
So I don't want to disrupt the flow of the office until one area is completed. Then we also need to work on the mayor and commission office in the front. There are old panels in there that are rotten because of the leaks over the years. So Mr. Penna and I, and you've had this conversation with us. We intend to remove all that rotten wood and material in there and basically clean it up and put drywall and do the flooring to be consistent with the balance of the office.
Okay. And everything I have in there, books and stuff, just box that up for me and label it and stick it, stick it somewhere. Madam Clerk, I'm sure you have a lot of room in your storage. Just kidding, I know you don't. Okay, are any questions or comments for the manager, Mr. Penna, on these changes that are being made to the inside of City Hall?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Just to be clear, we're, we're doing these changes to the finance department because of the proposed arrangement on having Ms. Leon work as a consultant?
No. The, the need is there to expand the accounting office because we have simply, we've run out of room and that's been the case for years. What we would like to have is some type of conference table or a working.
When you say you run out of room, what are you talking about? Are you talking about?
Record storage.
Records?
Records. I mean, I know you come here often, all of you, and you see that the space where Mrs. Leon and Rita are assigned to right now.
So we're not digitizing the records anymore or?
We are, but certain things, they're impossible to digitize pretty much. You have receipts. You have paperwork that are subject to 15-year retention, scheduled retentions, and you have to keep originals, especially on grants. You have 15- and 20-year requirements, five, 10, 15-year requirements.
Where do we keep all that now?
Right now, in the, where the room where the server is, if you come in here, there's a hallway that unites the back office with the front office. If you look in there, that is packed with accounting records, payroll records, just accounts, payables, audit, grants. The paperwork has to be stored somewhere. We have nowhere to store. You know, I have a very small little closet next to my, right here next to my office and that is also packed to the roof with records. I mean, can we digitize some? Yes, we can, but the accounting receipts are very difficult. You would actually have to take all the daily deposits, all the receipts that are written, and one by one, scan these. It's going to take a lot of time and manpower that we don't have.
Well, keeping them, you know, it's room that we don't have, so. I don't, I mean, I don't know. Have you considered, you know, putting the manpower into digitizing versus, you know, going through the expense of creating more room to keep more paper? That eventually is going to be more paper and more paper and more paper? Do you understand?
The accounting office will never be rid of paper. There's just.
I know, I realize that, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's, it's right. So that's what I'm alluding to. You know, you, you will all, if you're not digitizing, you will always have to keep the paper.
We are, we are digitizing a great deal of the work. We're digitizing the budgets, the monthly financial reports. We're digitizing the journals, the financial journals. We're digitizing all the audits.
So just to be clear, digitizing all the things that you mentioned, like receipts and so on and so forth? What you've determined is that it's not cost-effective to do that and it's more cost-effective to make the room?
Make the room, exactly. For certain files, there's a lot of it that can be digitized over time. But it's, you know, we would need to devote a member of staff or create a clerical position. Now, you're dealing with accounting records. Whoever comes in there needs to be mature enough to understand that if you unstable a receipt and it doesn't go follow the, the accounting procedure, it may create more of a nightmare. So if you ask me, we need, we need a scanning clerk in here and it's going to cost money as well.
You know, well, you're talking about increasing and adding one extra person to your finance department and having, you know, someone do consultation. I don't know, it just seems that we're, it just seems that we're going backwards in, in not scanning and digitizing everything.
We have been digitizing and scanning.
And causing and creating now more space to amaze, to amaze more paper. I mean, I don't know, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I am.
I'd like for you, and Mercedes is here, obviously, she's sitting in my office, but I would really invite, I would like to invite you to come in so that you could physically see what I'm talking about in terms of the receipts that we have to basically attach to the daily deposits, everything that goes to the bank because we have to balance that, that cash register every single day. And so these receipts are small and they're done on a daily basis. They are attached to daily deposits and deposit sheets that earmark every single payment to what account that gets credited to.
Well, I mean, there's, there's great technology out there for scanning small receipts. I mean, I have one here at my house that I.
And they're very inexpensive. But again, we go, we go back, who's, who's going to take the time to do this?
Well, you, you, you're saying you're adding one more person to the finance department?
No, I'm not.
Why can't that person do it?
No, I am not. As you know, that Mrs. Leon initially planned to retire.
Well, she's going to be, she's going to, hopefully, she's going to be doing consulting. That's one.
Yes.
And you have Rita, that's two.
You have Eliana.
And you have, now that's three. Before you only had two, now you have three.
Yeah, and you, you've needed three for a very long time and we've held up because of the budget limitations.
Okay. You know, I don't, I don't mean to, to.
No, I understand.
I, I, it just doesn't make any sense to me to create space and not digitize, you know, the paper, you know. We're, we're gonna, eventually what's going to happen is you're going to run out of room. You're going to run out of space.
But we are digitizing, Commissioner Blanes.
And then you're going to have to create more space and.
We are, we are digitizing. It's just very hard to assign somebody that we don't have to digitizing all the old records to make room for the newer stuff. So we've started to digitize just about everything. Everything is scanned and filed. Everything in accounting is, to the best of our ability, is being scanned. But again, you need a person actually to do all the scanning, even if there are very inexpensive equipment right now or computer technology that is available to us. You need a human being to put that.
Just to be clear, what you're saying is that you would need to hire someone that, just to scan?
Yes.
So who's doing the scanning now?
Right now, Mercedes. Rita does her own. I do much of mine because Scotty does some accounting functions.
So why do you need another person to do the scanning?
Because you have a lot of old records that you need to create the, the.
They're all records.
Space.
I'm sorry, but you just said we have all records that need to be created?
No, you have old records that need to be digitized. But you must keep them because you have to comply with certain regulations post, post-project.
All right, so, so be it.
But, but, but what I would like for you to do so that you have a clear understanding, I'd like for you to come by so we can physically show you what we mean and how time-consuming. Please come by.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
I have a question also. This might help. Don't we, haven't we had, during the summer, we've had not volunteers, but?
Interns?
Interns that have come specifically for scanning purposes to help to scan.
They have.
Clerk's records. We're continuing that program, right, if it's available?
If it's available, but this year, the school board did not put out, they didn't roll out the grant that they give us every year for the six-week program for 11th and 12th grade student that, that come here and they can perform a service and be paid through the school system. And it goes as part of a project that they're assigned for the summer months. So because of COVID, this year, the county did not roll out that, that project.
Okay, well, hopefully, we will be able to continue that going forward and that will, that will help in this situation that Commissioner Blanes has, has mentioned.
Right, and it was our intention to reassign some of the staff from the recreation center to the office because they're budgeted positions. It doesn't matter where you pay them for, you just, you, you want to make sure that these individuals are not furloughed in any way. You want to try and help as much as possible. But the fact is, is that they're assigned now to the senior citizen center. So it was our idea to use these, these, these young counselors to help us out and that has not been the case.
And you did tell me that was the intention. We were, they were going to help in the front office and then be redirected, which understand. I mean, COVID kind of redirected and changed a lot of plans. So that's understandable. I just want to be sure we were continuing to look into the program for the, for the summer interns.
Yes, ma'am.
To help out with this. Perfect. Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for your comments and questions as well. Madam Manager, continue with your report or was that it?
No, the community center, as of late afternoon yesterday, Evelyn notified us, notified my office via email that none of the city-owned and operated centers are open to congregate programs, meaning congregate. How are open to congregate uh programs, meaning congregate meals or classes. Only certain centers like adult daycares, and I know Evelyn is on Zoom. Uh, so please, Evelyn, feel free to jump in and correct me. But as I learned yesterday, only adult daycares that are privately owned are open at this time. Um, as of late afternoon yesterday, our seniors were contacted, most of them. Of the West Miami seniors were contacted, and they're still very skeptical about returning to the community center. Until everything opens up, until all the restrictions are lifted. And we're going to go, even if we go back to normal. Evelyn and I both agree that the numbers at the beginning in participation will be lower than expected. And we will see a very slow process for a return to normalcy. Most of these seniors will probably stay on our homebound meal program. And Mayor, you and I have talked about. The future of the community center, and I think I've had conversations with the commission. On how community centers will evolve within the next five to ten years. I think COVID has precipitated all those long-term uh plans. We will continue to monitor the item, and I think at this point, with all the holidays coming up. Uh, we, Evelyn and I recommend that we keep the community center closed until we reassess it in December. And um, as you know, they are receiving the second meal and um. So we, we have the ability to continue serving them at home. And uh, once we reassess the situation at, during the month of December. We will come back and make some recommendations. And all, obviously, we have to follow the Alliance for Aging Guidelines uh during this process as well.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So you'll continue to report to us, um.
For now, I, yeah, for now, I recommend, uh, and we recommend, Evelyn and I recommend that we, um. You know, that we look long term at reopening sometime in January, provided that. We are back to normal in every sense of the word. And I don't know if that's going to be possible or not.
I believe we, didn't we, didn't we make that determination at the last meeting and we all agreed that that, that would be the plan? Or am I?
I believe we spoke about it and uh we said that we would revisit this issue in early November. Um, I know we have two meetings uh scheduled for November. Uh, however, Evelyn conducted a follow-up survey, and I felt it was important to bring you uh the, the findings of the survey.
Perfect. So I, things are changing daily, we know that, so why don't we leave this, um. You know, as part of your report at, at, at the next two meetings. Um, see what, what, what Evelyn thinks, what you think, um. You know, see if the seniors have changed, you know, their minds in any way, shape or form, and then we'll just continue to discuss it in the next two meetings. And see if that, if that is the best course of action to stay closed um until the beginning of the year. As of right now, that seems to me to be the best plan, the best course of action. But of course, let's, let's see, um, let's see, you know, how things change in the next, during the next month. Um, but as of right now, I, I agree with that. Uh, does anyone have any questions for the manager on the senior center? And uh, and or for, for Ms. Paz? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Suarez.
Yeah, I think, I think, Yolanda, that we should contemplate the idea to. Uh, prepare to go to the regular operations by, by the January. We have to make a, a study, we have to see the conditions. This is a very good idea. Because we should try to get a city to a normal operation and the performance for our seniors because they need. A place to have love, to have care, and to be together. So if the conditions are favorable, we should go by that way.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and I agree with that assessment.
Thank you, Com- Commissioner Suarez.
We will keep this on my report as an ongoing matter or, or issue or just as an ongoing topic. And the next thing in my report is the playgrounds, uh playgrounds for small children are still closed within our municipal parks. It is the recommendation of this office that the playground areas of our parks remain closed. Until we're able to bring back a recommendation and after a review of the needed manpower on how to handle. The cleaning requirements. So um, I spoke to John, um, John recently about this, and I know that. Juan has to work miracles back there using his existing staff. And we'd like to bring this back on November fourth for a report and a recommendation on how to go about this.
Uh, Madam Manager, that, that is a good plan to me. I'd like for you to report back to us at the next meeting. Um, I'm in agreement with keeping them closed for now. I'd like to hear from the rest of the commission, um. Is there anyone opposed to keeping the, the playgrounds closed until um we get a report at the next meeting from, from staff? I have a pine hearing, no opposition. Madam Manager, the playgrounds will remain closed until your report of at least the next meeting. And then I wanna continue to hear from you um at the following meeting as far as the playgrounds are concerned.
Okay, Mayor, I, I'd like to just point out that I, I got a message from Major Delgado. Um, regarding the records issue, the storage of records.
Okay, go ahead.
Very, very valid point that we forget about. Although we don't have an official historian for the city. Our records have historical value. And Pete, I wanna thank you for that because that's a very important piece on the history of our city. And so I wanted to just put that on the record, and I thank you again, Major, for bringing that to, to our attention.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Thank you, Major. Um. Madam Manager, is there anything else on your report or did that conclude your report?
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions for the manager on the entirety of her report? Any questions or comments? Yeah, yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
I have something. Uh, there is no uh reconsideration in, in opening up the, the, the playgrounds? Is there a way that we can? You know, speed up that process instead of having to wait till next, um.
Next meeting?
Well, let's discuss it. Let's discuss it. Mr. Penna, Madam Manager, your comments.
Thank you. I'd like to yield to Juan. Um, obviously, he's the one that oversees the public works. Department, and he's the one that needs to be prepared to, to monitor, clean, sanitize. And do what needs to be done to make the playground available to the children.
In order to use the playground, CDC recommends that we clean the playground every two hours with a chlorine solution. So that would mean that we would have to have our vector truck spray down the whole equipment every two hours while the park, playground is open. Uh, the hours of operation of the playground are what brings it into a problem because it's gonna require. If we let it, uh, let it go into the night, uh, overtime hours to, to do the same uh process every two hours.
So. So even though there's no children playing there, and it's off hours, we need to continually do this every two hours? Or just, or just one operating hours?
During operating hours or while the playground equipment is open? Any kid that, uh, remember, Cooper Park is an open park. It's not a closed park. So if we open the playground there, uh, they could go in there all the way till sunset.
Okay. And, and what are other cities doing? Are they doing, are they abiding? Is, is this a suggestion by the CDC or is a?
It's part of the new norm uh manual that is published by the Office of the Mayor of Miami-Dade County.
And when you say new norm, wh- what is exactly that?
Those are the accepted standards uh devised by the Office of the Mayor based on the emergency order.
Do we have to abide by that?
We should. We should.
Why?
Because that's the restriction they're putting on using of playground equipment.
Exactly.
So, 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 so it's not that we should, is that we must?
We must.
We must.
Okay, Mr. Attorney, is that so?
That is correct, uh, Mr. Commissioner.
I'm sorry, what was that?
That is correct.
So we must buy, abide by that? Every two hours, we have to spray the uh, the equipment?
And while we're cleaning the equipment, we have to keep the children away.
Yes.
And also, you're talking about overtime expenses on a daily basis, uh, before sunup, after sundown. And Saturday and Sunday, you're talking about at least. Uh, a twelve hour shift for the employees that are assigned to that task.
Okay. Can we inquire to see what other cities are doing, like our neighbor Coral Gables and?
Well, they have the staff and they have the money to pay all the overtime uh for.
What are they doing? Are they doing?
They have, some of their parks have playground opened and, and some of the playgrounds are closed. I drive by and, and I see some playgrounds closed. And some areas of the youth center is o- are, are open, but again, they have. And I, I, and I hate to use the word, but they, they have a lot deeper pockets than we do, so.
So they're doing that. They're abiding by the, by the county.
Yes.
Rules and.
Once you open up, you have to adhere to the new norm. You have to.
So it's, it's not a should, it's a must?
Right.
Just to be clear, okay?
Right, right.
Anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, if I'm not mistaken. I do not believe the county, Miami-Dade County, opened their playgrounds. I, I do believe Miami-Dade County's playgrounds are officially closed. I mean, there may be some that are finding a way to open. Without anybody knowing, but officially, I do not believe that uh Mayor Heman has opened the playgrounds. In unincorporated Miami-Dade County as of yet.
Right, he has not made, yeah, he has not made that announcement.
That's, that's what I thought. And some municipalities have, uh, but I know Miami-Dade County officially. Has not opened their playgrounds yet. Parks, yes. Playgrounds, no. Uh, okay, so then, um, Madam Manager, you report to us at the next meeting on this so we can. Reconsider to see if anything has changed.
Yes, ma'am.
So that we can hopefully open our playgrounds um as soon as possible. I, I'm, I'm with you, Commissioner. I want to open them as soon as possible, so. You know how I am about the children, so I'm, I'm with you. We, we will continue to look at that and get that done as, as quickly and as safely as possible. Um, Madam Manager, I believe you said that was it for your report.
Yes, ma'am, that is.
Okay, at this time, at this time, Madam Clerk, I would like for you to. Report on um early voting for us, if you would.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, a, uh, there is a, uh, someone, uh, uh, Marcus Baez. Uh, in the chat, uh, screen, he, uh, I don't know if you noticed. But he asked if he could speak on, on something. I'm not sure what. Have you noticed that?
Let, let, I didn't. Thank you for bringing it to my attention. Let me look at the chat.
Do that, we should consider.
If, if, if at all still possible, I would like to speak briefly regarding a topic not on today's agenda. Um, I do not see a problem with that. Mr. Attorney, I can open up um to the public on, 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 for a comment. And as long as I, Mister, as long as Mister uh Baez registers with the clerk, is that correct, sir? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk, if you would not mind holding off on your report on early voting. And I will allow Mr. Baez at this time um to speak to us. Mr. Baez, please state your name and address for the record, sir. And then I need you to, um, a mi- a Madam Clerk, with him stating his name and, and address for the record. Would that be his official registration with you to speak during the meeting? Okay, very well. Mr. Baez, your name and address for the record, sir, um. And I'll be, we'll be happy to hear from you. Go ahead.
Thank you all for taking time. Uh, Marcus Baez, two zero zero one Southwest Sixty Seventh Avenue. Miami, Florida, three three one five five. Thank you guys for giving me a quick second to just bring something up. Um. Completely unrelated to today's agenda, I was actually just gonna call the office, but just wanted to bring this up because I felt this was important. My grandmother is been a resident of West Miami for about twenty-five years. Uh, residing at sixty-five eleven Southwest Twenty First Street. She's made uh several, she's brought up several times, you know, there's a lot of like dark areas. Um, in the night in West Miami, which we always just kind of shove to the side. Um, I live here now because of her. Um, I was pretty much her primary caretaker. As you guys are probably aware, last night, there was a. Violent event that occurred here at, uh, District West Gables, where there was like a shooting of some sort. Uh, with the major police presence, they basically evacuated about four or five hundred residents into the streets of West Miami. Um, with about four or five choppers, uh, police with, with long guns all throughout the area. It was pitch black out there in the pouring rain for every single resident, and then everybody concerned. Couldn't see anything. Everybody's backyards were completely black. So I just wanted to just make that comment. When it comes into consideration next time that if there could be something done or uh to be considered. Just some lighting in West Miami, because I walk this area every single day. But it's pretty unsafe out there when there's a shooter supposedly on the loose. And nobody, not even the police can see anything because they have to use flashlights. So just, just something to consider. That's all I really wanted to comment. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Baez, thank you. Um, thank you for that, and, and I, I am going to yield to our, our police department. On a report of last night's incidents, um, soon in the meeting. Uh, but as far as, as far as the lighting, I know I myself and, and Mr. Penna and the manager have had conversations. We are, we have looked into and we continue to look into um things such as retrofitting our, 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 our lights. And I'm gonna let Mr. Penna speak on that because I know him and I have had discussions on that, so. We are aware and, and we are working on it. Uh, Mr. Penn, if you could, um, no pun intended. Shed some light on, on Mr. Baez's comment about, about the, the darkness of our city. Uh, cause I know, I know we've discussed it. Go ahead, Mr. Penna.
Madam Mayor, as you know, we have uh met with uh Florida Power and Light on several occasions regarding the upgrade of the streetlights. And uh, since their uh franchise agreement is not up for renew. There is a cost involved in retrofitting these lights to the LED lights that you see that we put in at Cooper Park. Uh, in order for us to do that throughout the city, uh, there would have to be some allocation of funds uh to FPL. For that, for the cost of retrofitting these lights with the newer brighter um LED fixtures that they have available for us.
Thank you. So, Mr. Baez, um, I will continue to, to stay on top of this for you. Be, we, we are most definitely aware of the situation. And uh, I will continue working with staff um to, to rectify and, and. And shed some more light on our, on our wonderful city. So know that we're on it, but thank you for bringing it to our attention, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you're welcome back to all of our meetings. I, I appreciate when residents are here um and participate in our meeting, so. So thank you. Um, thank you for being a, a resident of West Miami. And if your grandmother ever were to need anything, please be sure to, to reach out to me, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, M- Madam Clerk, if you would, at this time, report on early voting.
Um, yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, good morning. Now, this office has to report that early voting for the November third, twenty twenty. General election is taking place at the West Miami Community Center. It started on Monday, October nineteenth, and will end on Sunday, November first, twenty twenty, at seven P M. The center is open from seven A M. to seven P M. The vote by uh mail ballots are accepted and may be dropped off at an insecure ballot drop-off uh box. Just outside the center and supervised by the Elections Department. Vote by mail ballot may be requested online by mail, by phone, by fax. And the deadline is October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. Ballots uh must be submitted by mail. Or in person by November third, twenty twenty. Uh, the early voting schedule is posted in the city's website main page at. W W W dot cityofwestmiami F L dot com. That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Manager, I mean, Madam Clerk. Uh, and point to privilege, Madam Clerk, I'd like to take. Uh, the report of the mayor next, and I want to yield to um. My chief, my major, and I see my master sergeant present. I'd like to yield to them, um. Because I was going to do this already, but Mr. Baez brought up uh last night's incident. And I know it is a, it is a police matter, and I am sure it's an ongoing investigation. So there might not be any much more that they can tell us than we all know already. Um, but I would like to yield to them uh to provide us with uh any more information that's, that, that they have. And I also want to, want to thank my police department. Um, our chief kept us informed via the manager. Um, our chief kept us informed via the manager. Very, very immediate information, so we would all would all know what's going on. I want to thank, yeah, Commissioner, I see you. I'll I'll yield to you in a moment also. Um, I want to thank our our police department for all that they did and all that they do. I I know they were, they were put in a very precarious situation last night. Um, I am extremely happy that that everyone is well. Uh, I lend my 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 thoughts and my prayers to the officer, the Miami-Dade Police Officer that was injured. But it's my understanding that he is, he is doing okay, and I will obviously let the police department report on that. So, um, Chief, Major, Master Sergeant, if you would. Actually, I see Commissioner Blanca. Let me see what she needs to say. Commissioner Blanca, go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, with all due respect, I think this is an investigation going on, and we should talk about this now.
No, no, it is, it it is, and I agree, but I I I, like I said, I know there's an ongoing investigation. But I would like for the police department to, um, tell us anything more that we that they can um, to further the information that we have already, because Mr. Baez did bring it up, and I don't want it to go unsaid. We all know it, you know, we all know something happened. So I'd like to be sure that the police department has the opportunity to to set the record straight and tell us anything that they can, not obviously, um, interfering with with any investigation. Chief, Major, Master Sergeant, if you will.
Morning, uh, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The, uh, as as we all know, and it was in the news, um, Miami-Dade County Police Department was serving a warrant, uh, last night somewhere around six P M. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, the circumstances turned into a police shooting. An officer was shot. Uh, thanks to the grace of God, he's alive. He was shot in the head. Later, we found out that the offender was also shot by the officers. It took about three and a half to four hours to get him to surrender. Uh, the details of how it occurred or or the actual way things occurred are under investigation. The State Attorney's Office is the lead, uh, agency when it involves a police shooting, so I really have no further information other than, you know, what what I'm telling you at this point. What I would like to do is to let you know and commend our officers that were there, responded, who were there immediately. They were the first agency to arrive to assist Miami-Dade County. And I spe- especially want to thank and commend three of our officers who actually took perimeter points inside the building on the floor where the shooting occurred, giving cover for the officers that were basically pinned and awaiting if there was gonna be another firefight upstairs. And that would be, uh, Master Sergeant, uh, Valencia, Officer Cruz, and Officer H. Rodriguez, who was off-duty, geared up, and responded to the scene. And, uh, everybody that was on that scene needs to be commended for the for the work that they did. Uh, it was a precarious situation. But I have no further details at this point. This is under investigation again. And we will learn more in the future. I just don't know how long it's gonna be.
Thank you for that, sir. And that's all I wanted was, uh, anything you could tell us that obviously did not interfere with any type of investigation. And yes, as you said, pretty much everything you said was public, um, except now that you've you've commended, uh, our officers and and please know, sir, they have, I'm my heartfelt gratitude, and I'm sure everybody who's on camera right now is heartfelt gratitude for all that they do, um, and all that they did last night. And and they put their their, they put their lives on the line for us every single day. Every moment, they are out there, serving and protecting the city of West Miami. They put their, they put their life on the line, so. Um, my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of them to to the entire police department for all that they do for for our city. So thank you for that report, sir. Um.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Uh, this might be in the circumference of all the issues, but I'd like to point out that according to my information, uh, the city of West Miami is one of the lowest, if not the lower uh, city in the state of Florida with incidents of crime. So I think that this is very important. Am I correct, Chief?
Yes, sir, it is. Uh, yes.
To reassure the citizens, I think that this is very important to emphasize, Madam Mayor, that the city of West Miami is most to the pride of, uh, the administration, the commission, especially the Chief of Police, is the, uh, city with the least amount of in- incidents of crime in the state of Florida.
And that is direct credit, sir, to to our very, very fine police department, so.
This should be, uh, stated time and again. So to reassure the citizen of the city of West Miami that, uh, we do live in a very, uh, controlled, uh, crime-controlled city.
Thank you, sir. And and, uh, Mr. Baez, if it's okay with you, I am going to let everyone know, Mr. Baez has uh, continued to note in the chat that, um, it was not, it did not go unnoticed that, uh, the West Miami P D was there securing our neighborhood. Um, scary situation, but that he felt very safe knowing that West Miami P D was in the area. So thank you for this, for that comment, Mr. Baez, um, and we all agree with you. The men and women of the West Miami Police Department are second to none. Um, thank you. Uh, let's see, Madam Clerk, if we continue, uh, and I do have something else, but I'm gonna leave it for the good of the order on this. Um, Madam Clerk, if you'll continue with the agenda, please. Next item on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor, item seven, report of the city attorney.
Yes, um, I'm happy to say that, uh, the, uh, tribunal, three judges of the, uh, appellate circuit have determined that, uh, they will hear the appeal by Banham uh, Health, uh, on November twelfth, uh, two thousand twenty.
I'm sorry, November, what was that, November twelve?
Twelve, two thousand twenty.
Okay, I need to add that to my calendar. Okay, thank you, Mr. Attorney. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item eight, report of the city engineers.
Uh, no report at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. Next item.
Yes, item nine has been covered. Item ten, unfinished business. Item ten, a follow-up report, virtual commission meetings and possible hybrid model.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, I'd like to hear from staff, and I know, Mr. Attorney, you were working, um, on some, on this for me as well, so I'd like to hear from you as well uh, as a follow-up to this item. Madam Clerk, I mean, Madam Manager, do you have anything on this?
Uh, Madam Mayor, just, uh, to put on the record that you received an email from me, all of you did, on, uh, some of the hybrid models that are being considered by other municipalities to continue partially, uh, in-person slash Zoom meetings moving forward until further notice. Um, that being said, the moment we received that information, we made our city attorney aware, and I mean, we, meaning you and I discussed this, Madam Mayor, and we made the city attorney aware of what other municipalities were doing. We forwarded these, uh, these, uh, resolutions or ordinances, uh, for his review. And again, we're here to serve and make the accommodations that are necessary, uh, whichever way you deem appropriate to continue on with your meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, um, can you please bring us up to speed on your findings on this?
There's really no findings, Madam Mayor, because it all depends on what the governor is going to do. If you know, uh, the constitution of the state of Florida and, uh, the, uh, statute of the state of Florida mandates a personal appearance, uh, to, uh, H. One of the commission meetings. Traditionally, the, uh, uh, office of the, uh, Attorney General had, uh, waiver one time, uh, saying that, uh, uh, you can attend by phone and sometimes saying that you have to attend physically. Uh, the, uh, trend right now and the things that I've been able to obtain is that, uh, it would be, if you're sick or if you're exposed or if you're elderly, uh, you can attend from home. However, uh, coming, uh, November first, uh, there there would have to be at least three members of the commission appearing in person. Uh, they cannot appear all in by Zoom. Uh, at least three of the, uh, commission members have to be, uh, present. And two can justify the, uh, Zoom meetings by, uh, stating that either they're of age uh, exposed or, uh, they're ill and they cannot attend, and they can, uh, attend unbooked.
So, Mr. Attorney, the of age part, um, is would that be determined by us? Could we make that determination that if three of us are present, um, in in the same location, it doesn't necessarily have to be the chambers, but three of us can be present where we can be physically distanced? And then the other two, um, can be via Zoom. Is that, is that correct?
Let me clarify that. You see, that that has not been taken place. Uh, the governor of the state of Florida has not determined that that's gonna be the case. The determination by the governor of the state of Florida is that the existing condition are extended to November first. And that's, uh, period. Uh, he doesn't, he had not said one way or the other. He had not determined one way or the other. We're all speculating at what, uh, what's gonna happen uh, in the future as far as the medical condition and the reports of, uh, the, uh, medical authorities in the state of Florida and the nation. So there's no, there's no determination. They can stay at home, and there's no determination they could be that you had to, uh, they would mandate that, uh, you're gonna be in the, uh, chambers altogether. So that will have to wait until November first.
Okay, well, and that's fine, and and thank you for that information. Um, but if you recall that, um, it it, I I asked you to check because I know we're waiting for the governor, uh, but I wanted to look beyond that. I wanted to look beyond if the governor ruled that, you know, the commission meetings had to had to take place in person again. I wanted to look, I want, I asked you to look into the possibility of the hybrid having, um, a quorum in person, physically distanced, and everyone else, um, virtual, including staff. So we'll continue waiting for the governor's, um, the governor's mandate, and if you will continue looking into the possible possibility of a hybrid, um, after that, I would greatly appreciate it. Okay, um, is that it, uh, Mr. Attorney? Anything else on your report?
That's it.
Okay, uh, I'm sorry, that we were on agenda, item A. Does anyone have any questions for the attorney or for staff on agenda, item ten A? All right, Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Yes, item eleven, new business agenda items. Item eleven A, update report in reference to freebie sixty-day pilot program ridership and proposed modification of hours by city manager and Jason Spiegel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I'm gonna gi- yield to Jason, who's been patiently waiting to go over the report that's been provided to you in your agenda packet regarding uh, the utilization of freebie in our city and some of the modifications that we have taken into consideration to try to make it, uh, more people-pleasing, if you would. So, um, if if you can entertain Jason for a few minutes to give you a rundown and explanation of what is contemplated in the agenda part packet.
Yes, thank you. Jason, thank you, and welcome to the meeting, sir, and, uh, take it away. It's all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, good morning, everybody, commission, city staff. Um, thank you for having me here today. Um, as you know, we we launched the West Miami Free Freebie Program about two months ago. I'm really in the midst of this pandemic, and I'm gonna give a quick synopsis synopsis on what's really going on right now with the program. Um, so everybody that has ridden the service has had nothing but positive feedback and has been really happy um, with the drivers, the convenience, the reliability, and the 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 easy connectivity to get where they need to go. Um, the issue is, obviously, due to COVID, it's been a challenge to educate the community and really get the word out about the services, which has led to a slower-than-anticipated buildup of ridership. Now, there's a few, um, challenges that we have uncovered, you know, over the last sixty days in operating this program, um, with the biggest one being the hours of operation. Um, right now, the hours of operation follows the same hours and the same schedule of the previous shuttle service, um, which is nine A M. to five P M. Um, and it's, and it was really geared towards the senior population, the older adult population, as well as the students that would get out of school around three P M. Um, and if you think about it, um, you know, operating from nine to five, that's when most people are working, so um, a lot of the families are not within the city of West Miami during that time, um, while we're operating, which means they never have a chance to use the service. Um, and with COVID, obviously, seniors and adults, they're the ones that are staying home right now and not moving around at all. Um, so it's definitely presented a challenge to build on that ridership, um, with the hours of operation that we've been running. Um, so based on that, um, and kind of looking at the data that you guys have in front of you, you'll see that the majority of the riders are requesting rides around the lunchtime and then more towards the end of the day. So in my recommendation to the manager, um, I recommended starting the service not at nine A M., but starting at eleven A M. Um, and going from eleven A M. um, to three P M., uh, I'm sorry, eleven A M. to two P M., and then three P M. to seven P M. Um, the later that we go, the better chance that we have to capture more population, and the more chance we're gonna get people that get to be educated on the service. Um, and like we've seen with our current people that are rotting the service, once you ride once, you become a forever rider. Um, it's been a very popular, and again, the feedback has been very tremendous. The only challenge, as we've had over the last sixty days with this pandemic, is educating the community and really getting the word out about this great service. Um, so we've been working on some, uh, additional marketing strategies, uh, with the manager and staff on really on how we can implement, um, and educate a little bit, uh, uh, better. Um, we're gonna be sending out a mailer, a physical mailer to every single resident, um, within the city of West Miami. Um, that's gonna talk about the new service, talk about the new hours of operation, um, and just continue to get the 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 word out there about the service. Uh, we've, we've continued to, uh, visit all the large residential complexes. Um, we've provided them brochures. We're gonna provide them additional new marketing brochures with the new, uh, hours of service. Um, but I believe that by kind of just tweaking the hours of operation a little bit, we're gonna be able to see a pretty big gain in ridership. Now, it's not gonna get up to the levels that we, you know, we were hoping pre-COVID, but they'll get back, get back up to a respectable level, and we'll continue to build from there. Um, so if there's any questions on the report or anything that I just went over, obviously, I'm here to answer any, um, any questions you guys have.
Jason, I do have a question. Um, the the spots we chose outside of our of our municipality have, has, have they been used? Um, you know, i- is there ridership to those those designated spots that we we talked about? How how is that working out as far as the, I I forget what you call them, the?
The, yeah, almost like island-type spots.
The spots, yes, okay, yes. How how has that, how has that been?
Yeah, so I mean, people are definitely using the service to get to kind of the commercial corridor. Um, you know, that's, they're definitely using it for that. We have people that are using it to get over to Walmart. Uh, we've had a few people use it to get down to the hospital. Um, so it, there's definitely, uh, some use there. Now, I can't, I don't have enough data collected today and enough ridership to be able to say, hey, listen, there's constant people going there every single day or X amount of people going every week. I want to be able to build on this ridership, um, that we've started, to be able to provide you more and more data on really where the hotspots are. But if you look at the heat maps on the chart, on the charts that you have, you will see where the hotspots are for pickup, and you'll see where the hotspots are for the drop-off there. Um, anything that is in dark red, that means that is where we're doing the mo- majority of the pickups and drop-offs. Um, and then green is, you know, we we've done a few drop-offs, and then any spot that does not have a red, green, or yellow um, square, that means that there was no pickup or drop-off within that spot there. Um, but that that heat map will actually give you a a a direct view on every single place we're dropping people off, um, right now.
Okay, um, like I said last time you and I spoke, Jason, I am an avid rider of freebie. I love it. I take it everywhere I can. Um, your drivers are extremely professional, courteous. Um, I can't say enough about freebie as a resident, um, for my personal use. I I, it's a tremendous service, and, um, I am just so grateful that you guys are here. And as you, I I want to increase our ridership, so I look forward to hearing back from you, um, with more data. And I know we're we're upon, almost upon the, uh, the free trial period, so, um, Madam Manager, I guess my question would be to you after our chart, after our trial period, or Mr. Penna. Um, do we foresee continuing this at this point? Or is that something we need to continue discussing? Because I, for one, want to see it continued. So what happens as we're approaching? So what happens as we're approaching our trial period?
Well, you want to, you want to report on this? I don't have a conflict of interest, but this is something that's under his office.
Mr. Penna, go ahead.
Our recommendation at a later meeting will be to continue on with the freebie project and make it a year round contract. The service right now because of COVID to seniors like Jason said is non-existent. And anything that we do with the allocation of cert tax funds has to go towards transportation. So otherwise, we have to return that amount to the cert tax fund. At this point, freebie is the one that's connecting everyone to the rides. And I could only see going up from the numbers that Jason has provided us that it will be going up as we allow for later pickups. And now we are also considering a Saturday inclusion of the route to start on a part-time basis as closer to Saturday coming up.
Perfect. So if I'm not mistaken, we are now going to run 11 to 7 Monday through Saturday. Is that correct, Jason?
No.
No.
No, Saturday will be part-time basis.
From 10 to 2.
There'll be a 10 to 2 operation.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, because that's, when I went to write it yesterday, that's not what I saw. Okay, so Monday through Friday. Are we sure about that? I thought that, Jason, what are we doing?
So, yeah, we know, we talked about Saturday service and I was just waiting for direction from the manager and Juan on what they wanted to do with Saturday.
Okay, I thought we were going to run it all down Saturday.
May I, Madam Mayor? We'd like to introduce in the next 30 days, which would be the expiration of the trial period of the pilot program, if you would. We'd like to go on a part-time schedule just to see, to gauge the interest on Saturday. That doesn't mean that we're not going to look at the full-time Saturday possibility. And especially if we have the grant from the Florida Department of Transportation that would kick in to assist us with the expenses associated with the program. And hopefully these advertiser, advertisement commitments will also assist in reducing costs to the city, then at which point we would consider going full-time. But I think just to gauge appetite, if you would, I would go slowly but surely. And the last 30 days of the program in its pilot phase is do a part-time. Now, the schedule during the week has a one-hour break from 2:00 to 3:00 PM, which is the lunch hour, as I understood it, Jason, from our conversation, would give the driver a one-hour lunch break where the vehicle would not be operational. So as I understand that the hours are 11 to 2 and then 3 to 7, Monday through Friday and Saturday, starting at 10:00 AM till 2:00 PM for the balance of the pilot program. Because there is a cost associated with this. So we have to gauge.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Madam Manager.
No, no, I'm done. We have to just try and gauge interest.
Jason, in your experience, Commissioner, I see you, you'll be next. Jason, your experience is, would 10 to 2 be a good time for Saturday? Or should we, earlier or later? What do you think about the part-time Saturday hours?
I think it's, you know, it's a good set of hours to gauge the demand. You guys would have a better understanding of, you know, the community of West Miami and how they move around on the weekends and, you know, where the majority of people are going on Saturdays. We haven't operated there on Saturdays. In other areas, I mean, it's hit or miss. There's areas where we're extremely busy on Saturdays and Sundays. And then there's other areas where, you know, it's trickled in ridership. So it really varies by community.
Okay, so then when you send out this flyer, this advertisement to every household, you will be incorporating these new hours that we're talking about now, right?
That's correct. So Monday to Friday, 11 to 2, then 3 to 7, and then Saturdays as a part-time basis coming up from 10 to 2.
10 to 2. And you're also, I know you've been reaching out to the businesses as far as, you know, securing advertising. And I want to mention, remember, we also talked about when you secure the advertising, we still want to maintain our logo on the vehicle as well. So we have to find, you know, the right blend of that, the advertising and our logo. Because I want everyone to know, obviously, you know, that that is a West Miami freebie. So, okay, Commissioner Suarez, did you have a question, sir? Go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. We still have, we still are in the pilot program time, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not final thing. Did you just tend to adjust the minutes?
Yes, yes. We are, we are looking to and hoping to continue this going forward, but yes.
I think Saturday, Saturday in the morning, the people are more busy doing things. But Saturday afternoon, after 1:00 or 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, especially the senior citizens and the young people, they are going to be their private life. Saturday, I don't think they use too much of these things.
Okay, so then you're fine.
You'll be a part-time.
Okay, so you're fine with Saturday 10 to 2, like we just discussed, to try that. Okay, good. I'd like to hear any questions or comments from the rest of the commission on freebie. Any questions for staff or for Jason? On anything we've said or comments? Has anyone else ridden freebie besides myself? Could I see a show of hands? Okay, well, come on, guys, let's get with it. I have ridden freebie a lot. I'm challenging all of you all to ride freebie. The manager will take the winner out to lunch. Whoever writes freebie, I'm just kidding.
All right, let's do it, let's do it.
I'm challenging, no, I take that back. That's not the case. But I'm, I'm not a challenger, so welcome. It is a fantastic service. And I would love for all of you to ride it and advertise. I mean, who better than ourselves to promote freebie? And I'm doing it. So I would very much like to see everyone else do it as well.
Yeah, I think it'd be great for everybody to at least, you know, experience the, you know, requesting a ride through an app, getting picked up at your door and getting taken to where you need to go, door to door for free. I mean, it's a game changer and we just got to get the word out.
It's an absolutely wonderful service and I couldn't say it better myself.
So you've been invited to the challenge by Mayor Rodriguez and you're officially invited for lunch.
No, the lunch part, I'm taking that because now, you know, we, there's no, there's no date on who's going to win, okay? So it's just a challenge, but there's no, there's no, there's no prize. It's just a verbal challenge for everyone, but there's no prize at the end, okay?
It'll be my pleasure. We've been cooped up inside for too long.
We just can't all ride it together, okay? We got to do one at a time. And wear your mask, of course, when you ride freebie. Jason, do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it. Again, you know, if you guys can, you know, help get the word out, we're going to do our part. And, you know, the combination of our two forces, we should be able to get the ridership going. And once it starts going, it's not going to stop.
I agree with you, Jason. Thank you so much for your report. Thank you for being a part of the West Miami family. And I hope this is will be a very long relationship that freebie has with the city of West Miami. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, guys. Have a great rest of your week.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Yes, item 11B, report by the Office of the City Manager in reference to consulting services between the city of West Miami and Mercedes Luli Leon as financial advisor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Commission. As you know, I have individually spoken to you on all of the efforts that have, we have tried to convince Mrs. Leon how necessary her services are to the city and how to keep our, how we have considered her anticipated departure and how it would affect the city. So we have opened up a conversation with Luli about the possibility of staying on as a consultant to the city with the opportunity to work remotely or at times by coming into the office. This arrangement would require some modifications to the workload, which I have discussed with the accounting staff and would like to share with you. Mercedes has agreed to accept a modified work schedule, yay, that would include a minimum of 20 hours per week and flexible schedule to include a mostly remote work and some onsite work, especially during the time where we get audited from all of our different providers and municipal partners as needed. The schedule would provide a minimum of 20 hours and a maximum of 25 and maybe on a given week when there's an audit, 25 to 29 hours. But I don't see it go beyond the 25 hours. Some of her day-to-day responsibilities now will be reassigned to Rita, who would stay as an accounting specialist number one, and Eliana, who's been in training, who will continue to work full-time onsite. These two ladies are very well-versed and they have knowledge on the day-to-day accounting functions. And I am comfortable that Mercedes will have enough time, I don't know, maybe after midnight, to distribute some of her workload and train Eliana and Rita equally to be ready to take on the task ahead of him. This opportunity also, by bringing Eliana into the mix, is going to lead the way in preparing for future attritions that are inevitable with time. Mercedes and I have discussed the possibility for an agreement and Mr. Villalobos has prepared a document that provides the work schedule and the arrangements for consideration and approval by the City Commission. Talk about what the major brought up, the historical value that Luli brings to the accounting office cannot be measured in any way, shape, or form. And I don't think that even if you hire a person that comes in with the highest credentials, that person is going to have to have a learning curve, which is going to be anywhere from two to five years. The institutional knowledge is priceless, Madam Mayor. And I look around to many municipalities. I see that they struggle in the, in some areas. And I think we've built a team with lifers here, people that are here for the greater good of the city. They're here because they have spent the whole year, their whole life in contributing to better government in our municipality. And I really could not think of a better person to continue on with the city in a consulting capacity. Her priorities right now are with her grandchildren and I cannot blame her for that because I'm in the same set of circumstances. And I wish I could be a full-time grandmother and the ship sailed. I have teenagers already, so time flies. And I think that she should enjoy this time with her children. That being said, Mercedes, under this proposed agreement, the city would provide her a computer, a printer, and install the documentation so she could work remotely from home. She would not have any bank, any privileges on bank signatures because she moves on as an employee of the city to a consulting capacity. She will have access to office staff and to me 24/7. Her duties would be outlined in the attached Exhibit A that we prepared on the duties and responsibilities that she would take on under this agreement. Mercedes would become pretty much a financial advisor to the city under the agreement. And again, the two ladies that stay on will stay as accounting specialists, one and two, and continue to fall under the jurisdiction of the manager's office. Under this proposed agreement, there will be a salary and benefit that will fund 100% of a new entry clerical position because we are removing Eliana from the front office to the back office. We would be moving Raisa Ortiz to take over the water department. She's been in training. That would put ladies up next in working the daily deposits, the passports, the counters. And that opens up a window of opportunity to bring in another clerk. And it should leave us with some savings along the way. I firmly believe that this is the best option and one that the city should pursue in the interest of maintaining our level of service integrity of the accounting practices established by the city and the continuity of the institutional knowledge. And because of all of the above, this office recommends the approval of this agreement. And again, I look forward to discussing the proposal further with you or taking any questions you may have at this time. The agreement also sets the hourly rate for Mrs. Leon, which is consistent with her hourly rates. She would not have any employee benefits, per se. She would have to be part of the retiree insurance program, which is allowed under Section 2.6 of the city code. And all of her work schedule, her duties, the assignments, the compensation is set forth under the agreement. I would recommend that we try this through the end of September 2021. And if it works out, that it gives this office the ability to renew every year or every two years, as you deem appropriate. It provides for a section where either party may terminate the agreement with or without cause upon written notice within a 45-day window of time. And basically, I think it's a win-win situation for the city.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Any questions or comments for the manager on this item?
If you want to hear from Luli, she's here. We'll move her around.
I know how much Luli loves to talk on camera at the microphone, so.
That's the only thing that we.
I'm not sure if you're setting me up to ask her, Madam Manager, because I know how much she, she loves to do that.
Listen, it's been 37 years that we've been working together in this city. And that's the one area I have not been able to.
And it's not going to happen. I don't think it's going to happen at this time. Commissioner Suarez, go ahead.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
This is, this is the manager's report.
Recommendation.
Recommendation. Now, what is the resolution?
It's coming. Is it, is it an item?
That's why it's important.
It's a next item.
I'm waiting for that.
It's coming. I just, I had to open, I had to hear from, we had to hear from the manager.
Too much conversation.
And now I'm asking if anyone has any questions. I do have a question. Okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Blanis, go ahead and then I'll ask my question. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I am glad that Luli is staying as a consultant. Can't say enough about her and how much she's contributed to the city and our finances. But I'm concerned because, as the manager stated, it will take two to five years to train someone or bring them up to speed to be able to take over once Luli decides she does not want to do her consultation anymore. Rita is not going to be staying around, you know, for a long time either. So that leaves us with Eliana. So my concern is that, you know, looking, looking forward, looking into the future, what are we doing to make sure that we are going to have someone that's going to adequately come in and take over, you know, and fill that position, you know, without any, without any issues? So that is my concern and that is not being addressed.
Oh, let me address it, Commissioner Blanis. And it's a, it's a great concern to have. I have it as well. I can tell you right now publicly or in whatever fashion, I can tell you that the day that we don't have Mercedes to lead the accounting office and work with the administration and do what she does best, you're going to have, we're going to have to hire somebody from the outside. When that time comes, I know.
My concern is, you said that it will take two to five years to train someone.
No, not to train, to build the institutional knowledge, to learn where all the grants, all the accounting.
When are we going to start doing that?
Whenever she gets ready to leave and that's no, she's young.
I know, but, you know.
A lot younger than I am.
I don't want her to say, all right, you know, that's it, I'm done, you know. Because, you know, I mean, I mean, if I was in, if I was in her shoes, you know, I would be thinking about, you know. I mean, I don't know, I can't say that for sure, but. I mean, I don't know, I I I can't say that for sure, but. I I just don't wanna lose her.
And not have a succession plan in place.
And not have her as someone that's going to. Teach, train and pass on her knowledge and wisdom to whomever it is that we select. To take over.
Right, and the city will, when the time comes, I know that Luli's not gonna give us forty five days, she's gonna give us four, five, six months.
I know what she lives, huh?
Exactly.
We'll go get her.
Exactly.
I don't know, grandchildren, grandchildren can change your mind really fast, so I don't know about that. I wouldn't put all your eggs in that one basket because grandchildren have a way of changing our minds.
They tip the scale, Commissioner Blanes, and now wait till yours come and you'll see what I mean by that, but. That being said, Luli lives here. This is our home, this is an extension of our home. And I am very confident that when the time comes, that it is the moment that she walks away from this. We will have enough time to hire somebody and for her to come in and train that somebody, even if we gotta bring in a playpen here. She will pass on that institutional knowledge to whoever we hire. I can tell you unequivocally today, if she were to walk out tomorrow. We do not have that person. In house, because although everybody has a small part in the accounting office here. And payroll in in Florida retirement system benefits, the day to day accounting, the deposits. We don't have a person that. That is so knowledgeable in the accounting and auditing practices. That have kept us in such good standing all along the the last thirty seven years. So she's gonna need some time, when that time comes, to bring in someone. And hopefully, we will be able to make the right recommendation, then select the proper person to take over that position. And that will happen, you know, that will happen with many of our positions once we start. Um, attritioning here. Nothing lasts forever and and it's gonna happen, it's gonna happen with me, it's gonna happen with department directors. And yes, I wanna stop the clock, but the reality is, is that every government goes through these. Um, these changes and these are inevitable. I just, I can tell you. That with a person that we're dealing here with, she's not gonna leave this city hanging. She will pass on the baton with all the goodies in it. Um, to the new person that is selected by the city when the time comes.
And for every spoken word that you've said is the sole reason why I brought up my. My issue and my concern.
Thank you.
I guess it's on the record now, so.
Commissioner, Commissioner Blanes, that is a very, very, very valid concern.
Yep.
Very valid concern. Um, and thank you for bringing that forward. Now, I have a question as I, as I was listening to both of you. Um, because we're gonna have an accounting specialist one and accounting specialist two after Luli leaves, obviously. Um, so we will not have a finance director title.
The finance director title was created here many years ago. Um, this was an accounting office. If you go to your charter, you'll see that under the provisions of the charter. The city manager is the chief financial officer for the city. By designation of the charter, I mean, this is something I didn't come up with, the charter was written way before my time. And that that was established and the finance director has always, or the finance. Uh, staffer has always been under the jurisdiction of the manager. Now, is this an issue that in future years you will have to address, bringing in? Uh, or or promoting a manager that has the, the. The knowledge of the finances of the city, yes, that that will happen. When I move on, when Mercedes moves on and when Rita moves on. So I can tell you for a fact that, um, these are issues that the city is going to have to address in future years. But if you really, uh, although she was given this title as finance director. By charter, it's your city manager, the chief financial officer of the city. Luli will come in and serve as the financial advisor. However, I will unequivocally tell you that I will continue to re. To, to, to consider Luli our financial director, whether it's an employee or in a consulting capacity. She's my, she is my finance director and will always be my finance director.
I completely agree with you, I'm just talking about specifically. Once Luli officially retires and becomes our consultant, we will no longer have a finance director. Position or title, call it, and I just wanted to be sure that, 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 you know, that's, that's all kosher and. We're okay with with the manager being the 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 chief financial officer by charter. And having an accounting specialist one and two, I just wanna be sure that that's all, all okay.
If you want to retitle and and Mr. Villalobos will will tell you.
No, 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 it's not a want, it's not a want, it was just a question that I had. It's not a want or a request, it was just a question, I wanted to clarify in my mind. How we were going forward, that was all.
Right, the only thing that I didn't put, and I wanted to clarify this for the record, because Luli will not be a full time employee of the city. And enjoy any of the benefits and not have any bank uh privileges to the banking signatures. That's why I didn't keep her finance, the finance director title on the agreement. Because she won't be able to sign checks on behalf of the city.
No, no, I agree, I mean, she can't be a finance director if she's not an employee, she's a consultant, so, no, no, I I am fine with that. And my question was, you know, just to be sure that we no longer have a finance director position. And or title that that was okay, I just wanted to bring that out and and discuss it, I'm fine with. Obviously, by charter, you're the chief financial officer and now we have. Uh, two new titles of accounting specialist one and accounting specialist two. I just wanted to bring it out and discuss it and 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 clear, make it clear in my mind, so I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Uh, any other questions, comments or concerns? Okay. Madam Clerk, if you can, um. Read the um, the next item, which would be the resolution, please.
Yes, item eleven C, resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager. To enter into a consulting agreement between the city of West Miami and Mercedes Leon. In the capacity of financial advisor, providing for an effective date of March fifteenth, twenty twenty one.
Move it, I move it.
I have a motion.
Take over.
I have a second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Yes, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Four zero item passes.
Luli, say something at least now.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, Luli, now you have to say something. I know you don't want to, but you have to. Oh, we, I I should say, we would like you to.
Okay, no, thank you very much, I thank you for your confidence in me, uh. Mr. Blanes, don't worry, Commissioner Blanes, don't worry, I will not leave the city hanging, I will make sure that somebody. When I decide to or when, you know, we we complete. This uh venture that I'll leave somebody that's um, ready to take over my position. I have every faith in Rita, you will know Rita, she she's great. And I know she's gonna do everything she can to help help me and and Eliana as well, so. We'll try it out and I, I hope it, I um, I have faith that everything will be fine.
And we will be discussing this again, obviously, before September twenty twenty one. Um, so you can let us know just how much those grandchildren have have and will influence. Your decision at that time.
I'm excited, I'm very excited about my grandchildren.
And you should, and you should be, and you should be.
Finally.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you all for your support, I think you've made the right decision and. And it's gonna work out, I guarantee it. Either that or we'll all be lined up on thirteen terraces.
And and again, Commissioner Blanes, uh, uh, thank you for bringing up that very, very, very valid concern. And thank you, Madam Manager and Luli, for addressing that concern um for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clerk.
Yes, item eleven D, report by the office of the city manager in reference to CARES Act reimbursement progress.
Okay, so, um, basically what I did is I issued a memorandum on. October fourteen to give you uh an ongoing report. On how um Hagerty, the consultant to Miami-Dade County. Is um doing with our requests for reimbursements on all of the expenses that are related. To COVID nineteen and those that qualify under the CARES Act, and I've broken them down by department. Uh, this report has been since updated. And so, um, we are trying to uh obtain reimbursement just about under every category, like I said. And we will come back to you after it's all said and done. And advise you of the money that we will be reimbursed, we have received. A few dollars and I wanna say we received the reimbursement for our laptop computers. The one that I'm using right now for Zoom, the one that the clerk is using. Uh, the one that the mayor is using, is approved, but it has not been reimbursed, so we've been reimbursed for two. And there's no reason to believe that we won't be reimbursed for the third one. We are being considered for reimbursement for the senior meal delivery program and I'm cautiously saying. Considered because I don't want to, um. I don't wanna have, say, we have a victory here until we have the money in the bank. But they are considering our request to uh reimburse us for the. Collaboration that we have added to the community center by um, by reassigning the um. The staff from the recreation center to the community center for the effort of distribution of a hundred and ninety meals a day. So that there, it's under review as we speak. Um, we should be reimbursed for the informational signs, the one that we have outside all of our. Facilities FEMA is expect expected to fund us or reimburse us the large part of it, but you know that FEMA. Takes a very long time to get uh to reimburse us. So we have and we're diligently working on all these reimbursement uh reports. We have also put in the um. The one pers- the protected glass expenses and all of the city hall and public services expenses. Um, with the ordering and placing of the protected glasses in the s- in the lobby of city hall, the um. The one to be placed in the new passport extension area. Uh, the all the sanitation, uh, the P P P P E uh supplies that we are. Um, that we have invested in and a- again, um, so far, we have been approved. To for about forty two thousand, give or take forty two thousand dollars or fifty two thousand dollars that we put in for reimbursement, so. And since this uh memo was issued, we have uploaded the one percent wage differential. That was paid uh through the last payroll for police officers and ongoing through the end of November. And so we are diligently processing and and following every dime. That is available to the city for reimbursement. So I wanted to let the record reflect that we're working with their consultant and I'm very confident that um. We will, we will come out at least um, to to make our money, the money that we've invested in COVID nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Manager, and I know you're you're working really hard to get us our money back, so um. We appreciate that greatly and Luli, thank you for all that you've done to um. To work towards getting our money reimbursed. Any questions, any questions on the CARES Act reimbursement progress for staff? Nope, fun hearing no questions. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item eleven E, selection of upcoming dates, holidays and projects by city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city commission. Uh, it looks like twenty twenty is is uh quickly coming to an end and I wanted to provide you with a calendar of the upcoming holidays. The upcoming commission meetings and what we are planning for November, God willing, for our Thanksgiving uh meal. And our holiday meal and um, we've basically marked mapped out your. Your observed holidays, which we will announce on our social media website. And I wanted to to see if you wanted to go through the calendar and take this time. To cancel or possibly cancel the second meeting in December, uh tentative. Uh, pending your approval, December sixteenth would be canceled. Uh, for, as we do for a holiday break, that means you would have your. First meeting would be December second. And again, the time to be announced based on the new governor's orders on commission meetings. And the cancellation of December sixteenth, if you approve it. Um, we would also would like to request to see if you would authorize us. If you would authorize us to close city call, the twenty fourth of December, twenty fifth is a holiday. And again, the thirty first of December and the first of January is an observed holiday. So we wanted to bring these for your consideration. And again, any changes to the calendar that you deem appropriate. We have the Halloween drive by mayor, which you know that I sent you a draft proposal for the flyer.
Yes.
Um, we are observing um. Veterans Day, November eleventh, my daughter's birthday. Um, we have two commission meetings scheduled for November and that's the fourth and the eighteenth and the time to be announced. And we also wanted to point out two dates as discussed, mayor. For the potable water phase one groundbreaking ceremony. The contract is contractor has been selected, all the paperwork has been executed. And uh he would like to get started with the project and we are proposing either November fifth, which is a Thursday. A groundbreaking ceremony during the morning hours, afternoon hours, whatever you determine, or Friday. November sixth. Um, either one of those dates would work for the contractor and I don't know if it will work with uh with your schedules. So if we can go through these calendars and you give us our marching orders, we can move on and make the necessary arrangements.
Yes, ma'am, let's take that up right now, um, the manager has gone. Has given us all these dates, we all have the copies in front of us. Um. Of everything the the manager just went over, does anyone have any questions, comments, is there anyone opposed? To the calendars that we hold in front of us, October's dates, November's dates and December's dates. Anyone opposed?
Uh, October, all we have left is the Halloween.
Right, right, I'm saying, uh, is there anyone opposed to anything that you've you've just told us and what we have in front of us? We have your calendar, we have the calendar, we have your recommendations. Do we wanna do it one at a time, is that be easier? Alright, we'll do it one at a time, alright. October thirty first is the next thing on the calendar and I hope to see you all um at the rec. To hand out candy to the children as they um, as they drive by um in the car with their parents. It's going to be from six to eight. The next thing we have is presidential election, obviously November third. We have our regular city commission meeting, November four, uh, that'll be determined by the governor as to. How we will hold it. Uh, is it, is anyone opposed to the manager continuing to pursue the fifth and the sixth dates for the potable water groundbreaking ceremony? Okay, no opposition, Madam Manager?
Either one of those dates.
Either one of those works for everyone, no one has said anything to the contrary. Uh, we're closed on November eleven for Veterans Day, happy birthday, Yoli. Um, November eighteen, we have another commission meeting, obviously, again, to be, location to be determined by the governor. Um.
The twentieth, we set aside for the employee luncheon.
That we're gonna hold off on, Madam Manager, until we get closer because we don't know what what restrictions or what will be. What mandates will be under, so I I say we we hold off on discussion or a decision on that until we get a little bit closer, is my recommendation.
As a, we'll put it as a tentative, uh, pending uh further orders.
Yes, does anyone have any opposition to that, leaving it pending until we hear more? About what's going on with the men uh uh restrictions, okay? Uh, November twenty six, Madam Manager, and November.
Twenty seven are are observed holidays.
Okay, so that's that, let's move on to December. Regular commission meeting, again, to be determined by the governor as to location. Uh, is anyone opposed to continuing, uh, as customary, canceling our December sixteen commission meeting? I have no opposition, Madam Clerk, uh. Uh, November, our December city, what's my commission meeting has been canceled?
No.
The employee luncheon on December eighteen, the same as the Thanksgiving luncheon, Madam Manager, let's. Let's leave that on the, let's leave that on, uh, up for discussion pending. Uh, the progression of, um, of restrictions. For coronavirus, uh, December twenty-four, twenty-five, we're closed. Uh, December thirty-one and January one, we're closed.
Thank you very much.
We've gone through the entire calendar, does anyone have any questions, comments or opposition to everything that's been said and decided? Upon hearing none, uh, we're done with calendars, Madam Manager.
Thank you. We'll work on the groundbreaking ceremony details, we'll send all of the guests, um, and. Juan, you and I need to get together on that to make the arrangements. Of course, there'll be some social distancing issues that we have to work on and we'll work on, um, the, the safety issues with the police department as well.
Okay, perfect, thank you, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item twelve, consent agenda items, we have one item under consent agenda.
Does anyone wanna pull this for discussion or anyone have any opposition to the consent agenda item? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Madam Mayor?
Consent agenda item passes, yes, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, uh, I just want to have leave to amend, uh, as to form the text of the, uh, resolution.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, fine, thank you.
You're amending it, uh, scribner's error, what are we amending it for, Mr. Attorney, so we, so we know?
I'm amending as to form because we have three separate, uh, issues, three separate matters. And I'm not going to change the context or anything else but, uh, uh, to, uh, segregate and, uh. Uh, have, uh, three separate, uh, uh, resolutions, uh, contemplating the same issue.
So, uh, you're amending just to form, is there any opposition, uh, anyone opposed to the, um, city attorney amending? Uh, the resolution to form? I have no opposition, Mr. Attorney, um, please proceed. With the, with the, um, form amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next, my, next item, Madam Clerk.
Item thirteen, good of the order.
Anyone for good of the order? I do have something, um. And I thought it best to bring it up at the end and not when we were having the discussion, um, about the incident last night. The severity of, of that incident was not lost on me, as, as I'm sure was not lost on anyone, um. And Madam Manager, you know, we've. We've had this, you and I have discussed this, um. Prior to last night many times, um, because it's been brought to my attention, there's been some, some incidents or situations, so to speak. Um, in that area and you and I talked about, um, discussing some proactive measures. Uh, things we could do to, you know. To make it a little bit better, um, so now that's just been, that's just, last night's incident prioritized. That conversation that you and I have had, uh, we had it as late as last night when you picked me up. Um, after notifying us all what was going on and again, I thank you and the chief. Uh, every opportunity he had to tell you what was going on, he did. I know he was very busy, but every second he had to call you and tell you. Um, to bring us, you know, up to speed, he did and you notified us immediately and I was in the car with you, um. Because I asked you to pick me up when you said you were gonna go and, um, as near to the perimeter as possible. Um, obviously without jeopardizing, uh, the, the situation, so when you picked me up and we kinda were circling the perimeter. Um, as, as close as, as possible, but as far as way as, as safely, um, necessary. We continue to discuss, um. Some things that, that, that we should be doing, so I know you said you're going to meet with staff and the PD. Uh, to continue the discussion on, on that and, um, I just want you to know that. I, um, want to be included, um, because, uh. The situation just, it's, it's not, last night's incident prioritized the discussions that you and I have had and will continue to have. On some of the things that, that, that have happened in that area, so with that said, I look forward to, um. Talking with you and, and code compliance and, and the police department, um, and being proactive. On some things that we need, that we need to take care of.
We are going to have a meeting, I haven't had a chance to even call for it. Because this was last night and today we had a meeting. But I assure you that you and every member of the city commission will be kept abreast. Of what measures can be taken on our end.
Right.
Um. To minimize any future occurrences of this nature and. While this happens everywhere, Miami-Dade County, every single day. Um, in homes, in businesses, in, in multifamily dwellings. It's just the society right now, we're living very difficult moments in time and. But obviously, I know that your interest and the interest of every member of the city commission is the well-being. Of the neighborhood and its citizens, so we will address. Within our limitations, we will address from our end what we can do to make things better. And I promise you that everyone will be, um, everyone will be included in this conversation.
Perfect, thank you, and, and as the attorney said, um, you know, we're very proud to, to have a very, very, very low crime rate. But when it hits home, so to speak, like it did last night, it brings it right back into focus. And, um, it moves it right up on the, on the, on the, in the priority order. That, that we look very closely at this, so. Uh, I just didn't, I wanted to be, I wanted to be sure that, um, everyone knows that. The severity of the issue was not lost on me and like I said, as I'm sure was not lost on anyone that's present in this meeting today. So we will go forward and, and maintain the safety of our residents, um. It is one of our most priorities, so with that said, does anyone else have anything for the good of the order? Okay, uh, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Me, this meeting is hereby adjourned.
Thank you.
Have a great day, everybody. Have a great day, everyone.
Thank you.